You guys all came in. I was waiting some time. You have a big longstanding.
Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 4th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, the first item, please.
First item is item two, unfinished business. Number one, consider authorization for an execution of contract C eighty-one dash twenty sixteen with RDG planning and design to prepare a comprehensive plan for the unincorporated Shawnee County over the course of twelve months beginning April one, twenty sixteen, at a cost of one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
I've got nothing further to add from March twenty-fourth. This is last on the agenda, so I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, I don't know if there are members of the public that wish to address the commission or have any input.
Sure. I'm just going to give the opportunity to the both of you first, but if you'd rather can open up at this time, if there's anyone who wants to speak on this item, please approach the podium to state your name and then you can make your comments. If not, Commissioners, we're back to us.
Well, Madam Chair, at this point, this was an item that we had contemplated at several times, have gone over on multiple occasions. When the RFP was issued, I indicated I was willing to at least support the RFP to take it to this point, to see whether or not we should advance towards the comprehensive plan. I've remained somewhat skeptical about the comprehensive plan. I've met with Barry Beagle on numerous occasions to go over the purpose of the comprehensive plan. And this is a one that's required a lot of thought, a lot of decision. I don't know if we have a unanimous board on this decision or not, because this is a big move for the county as to whether or not this is a necessary expense, whether or not this is going to be a prudent expense, what is the long-range impact, what are we going to yield from it, how is this going to change or affect the county. But given all of those, at this point, I am willing to support the comprehensive plan and move forward. I think that when we look at everything from environmental impacts to what direction do we want the county to move, having a plan. And just starting from that basic standpoint, how do we want the county to look or feel? Where do we want development to occur? Where do we want to, what are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? And at this point, it is more random than it is organized. If John Knight decides that he wants to suddenly run a corporation and a business on his farmland, we really don't have anything that says whether or not that's outside of going through the planning department. We have no, we don't have anything to say that's a good idea or a bad idea. At the same time, if Brian Cole wants to cut up his farmland and turn it into residential housing, whether or not we have utilities or easements there, whether or not that's a good move or a bad move, again, we don't have any idea of whether or not that's something we would support, outside of the thoughts and ideas of the Commissioners that are sitting at this table at that time. And I think that we really do need to have something that guides our county needs development. So I will support, make a motion to adopt the plan, or I guess adopt the contract with RDG.
RDG. There's a motion by Commissioner Cook. I'll second that motion. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I do have some discussion items and it is going to be a two-to-one vote. But I have some questions about the plan itself, and Mr. Beagle, if you would. And I'm going to refer to the RFP that we outlined specifically on page eight of seventeen down at the bottom where it talks about comprehensive plan preparation and the different items. A is be focused on implementation, outlining prioritized steps for the county, the community, and stakeholders to take. Could you give me five or six examples of what those priorities might be under this plan?
The priorities will be defined by the plan itself. As a result of going through the comprehensive planning process, engaging the citizens of Shawnee County, that will help provide a sense of focus and direction for what the priorities are within Shawnee County. What is the concerns? What are the problems? What are the desires? What are the new opportunities to be realized within Shawnee County? And then beyond that, once that is articulated and formulated into the comprehensive plan as a future goal, a direction that we want to go, then the next step is implementation. What steps do we have to actually take in order to get us to the end goal twenty years from now?
So what would be some of those priorities?
Well, that's-
Just some examples, maybe half dozen examples of priorities.
Well, I'm not going to circumvent the process or the voice of the citizens of Shawnee County. That's the role of the comprehensive planning process.
But as the planning director, you can't give some examples of what those priorities might be, being in touch with the community.
Sure. Well, you know, a couple of things that we've already talked about in the past has been agricultural land preservation. We have prime agricultural land within Shawnee County, and a lot of times it's viewed more as a commodity for consumption than it is to be valued as prime agricultural land. And so this gives us the opportunity to place a weighted value on agricultural land and say, okay, are there other ways that we could accommodate growth and development outside of consuming, you know, prime agricultural land? That's just one example. Another is our valued natural resources, which are a finite supply. Once those finite resources are consumed, that's it. And the natural resources that we're talking about are wetlands, riparian corridors, steep slopes, forested areas, et cetera. We attach no value at all in our land development processes to the natural resources that we have within the county, let alone understand what their carrying capacity and constraints are for development. And so through this process, it would give us the opportunity to identify those areas which have got carrying capacity issues. And we should maybe, without compromising the opportunity for growth, redirect that growth into areas which are more suitable to accommodate it without compromising environmental values or characteristics within the community. So those are just a couple of examples that I'm giving you.
But if I may continue, Madam Chair, but isn't that the job of the Conservation District, the State Department of Agriculture, don't, isn't that why they exist?
They're not approving subdivisions. You are. They're not approving building permits. We are. We're the ones that are approving land development processes that then convert those resources, those lands into development. And so it is, we are ultimately the stewards, the shepherds for Shawnee County. And it is our job to understand what all of those environmental resources are and apply the best development practices to try to protect those resources.
Okay. The permitting, and that's your job right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. The next item is identify economic development potential outlining ways to diversify the local economy. We spend five million dollars a year on GoToPica. What is this plan going to do that GoToPica doesn't do or should be doing?
Well, there is no connection between GoToPica and our land development processes within the unincorporated area. So what role does Shawnee County play and the unincorporated play with regard to enticing outside business interests to come to Shawnee County, or for business expansion within Shawnee County? This gives us the opportunity to take a holistic view of Shawnee County and understand and realize what Shawnee County's role is with regard to economic development. Right now, we don't have a policy as it relates to any accommodation, not only for industrial growth and expansion, but commercial development and expansion. So this gives us the opportunity to look at Shawnee County as a whole, and what part does the unincorporated area play in that process.
Well, haven't you worked with GoToPica and JADO in addressing those issues?
Only, my only connection with GoToPica is when they are courting an outside interest and looking at Shawnee County, and they're looking for a specific tract of land so as to accommodate, you know, that particular business interest. And then it's just, okay, well, what are the processes, what kind of planning and zoning requirements we have to put in play? But there is no policy implications that we're looking at. In other words, how does this fit in with the broader overall scheme of things? And so, you know, as far as from a planning policy perspective, no, there is no level of discussion like that with JADO. And one reason why is that one of the foundational documents that would help us go in that direction is the comprehensive plan, which then would define what that relationship would be.
But you could be proactive and work with JADO and GoToPica.
Well, I'm not saying that I don't work with JADO and GoToPica.
Okay. Few more questions. Identify viable funding sources for plan implementation. How much is it going to cost to implement the plan?
Well, again, as a result of going through the comprehensive planning process, identifying priorities, goals, and objectives for the community, and knowing the directions that we're going to take, then we will have a better idea of what potentially those costs may be. Right now, there is not a land use infrastructure connection within Shawnee County. In other words, that growth happens wherever it does, and we're playing catch-up all the time with road repairs, bridge replacement, bridge repairs, et cetera. What we need to do is provide a sense of direction and focus, so that way we are matching growth with our ability to fund and finance infrastructure. And what the comprehensive planning process does, it gives us the ability to set guidelines and parameters for future growth and development, and to make sure that the necessary infrastructure is there to support it at the same time. So if somebody is proposing the subdivision of land into various residential lots or a commercial one that does for purpose, but we don't have all the necessary services to support it, well, then that's not appropriate location, or it's not the appropriate time in order to develop that property, because we don't have the necessary infrastructure in place. And who's going to pay for that? We, the people, are going to pay for that through our taxes. And so this gives us the ability to put in place a planned orderly fashion by which we are going to accommodate growth, and therefore, we can better manage our resources and understand what the funding strengths are going to be in order to support that growth.
So we don't know what it's going to cost to implement the plan, if I'm reading you correctly.
Well, we're talking about the plan as, you're talking about the plan as the final product. We don't have the final product.
Well, I'm reading the RFP, and it says identify viable funding sources for plan implementation. We don't know how much it's going to cost, but we do know that it's going to be taxes or fees.
Well, what this is talking about is that if we're going to implement the mandates, the long-term prescriptions of the plan, that one of the things that I'm expecting the consultant to do is to identify what outside sources, you, to grants, loans, or whatever, if need be, in order to fund those implementation strategies. Now, we don't know what those implementation strategies are, but we're saying that for whatever comes out as the final recommendations and goals and objectives of the plan, we want the consultant to give us funding options of ways that we can accomplish that.
But we still, we don't have a clue how much it's going to cost. Could be five thousand, could be five hundred thousand, could be five million, if I understand you correctly.
Well, again, what the comprehensive plan is doing, it's not, it's not an investment portfolio. It's not saying, okay, we're going to spend the money necessarily this way. It is providing us with land use guidance on the best, wisest way that we can grow and develop into the future. So that way, in the end, it is a decision-making tool for you in saying, okay, is this wise development? Are there going to be environmental and economic impacts associated with development that are unanticipated now? And so now we have a way that we can, we can get out ahead of the curve and actually plan what is the best, most prudent way for Shawnee County to grow.
Couple of other items I noticed in RDG's contract that one of the electives is a statistically valid survey, which would cost us an extra fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. So as part of this contract, we don't get a statistically valid sample of what our community members want. Is that, is that what, am I reading that right?
Yes, that is true. One thing we'll do is conduct a community survey, and probably be administered through their website and through other various sources. And it's another opportunity for the community to get engaged in the process and identify the issues that they want to. Now, if we want to, we can certainly do a balanced statistical survey and incorporate that as part of our planning process. But the whole point of this is public engagement.
So we're going to have public engagement without a statistically valid survey?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm not going to support this, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why. Number one, it duplicates what's being done, or should be done, by JADO and GoToPica, by the Conservation District, by the Department of Agriculture, by the Planning Department, by Public Works, by Parks and Recreation, by the Audit Finance Department. It duplicates all of those things. Commissioner Cook and I have had discussions before about organizations and processes that overlap and don't make a significant contribution. But the main reason that I'm going to vote against is because my constituents don't want it. I've heard from many, and several from Lake Sherwood, who absolutely don't want this. And I'll read an email I got that's typical of what I've heard. It says, "Bob, I have read through the comprehensive plan. I don't believe Shawnee County needs this type of plan at this time. I think it's far too reaching and could cause some real problems down the road. This plan gives the planning department far too much power over the landowners within the county." And I'm going to repeat that. This plan gives the planning department far too much power over landowners within the county. I would have to vote no on this proposal. Thank you for letting me have my say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair, before, just to clarify, Commissioner Archer, when you say that you and I have spoken, I just want to put on the record, that is in the public meeting.
We've, we've, has it got that?
That was implied, Commissioner.
All right.
But thank you for making that explicit.
And then, Madam Chair, just Commissioner Archer, three years ago, as new members to the commission, we voted to execute a contract for a large sum of money for a master plan for Parks and Recreation. Again, there was a lot of skepticism as to whether or not that was a prudent use of tax dollars. Anytime we spend a hundred thousand dollars on a piece of paper, that we don't know how it's going to be utilized. But the master plan for Parks and Recreation has given us that blueprint of what our priorities are, where we should be focusing. And quite frankly, to be a critic of the master plan for Parks and Recreation, has it cost us a lot more money afterwards than it did before? Probably. Because it told us, these are the things that are lacking. These are the things you aren't doing. These are the places where you are not investing back into your community. And it gives direction to John Knight. It helps the commission be able to focus in on, should we do A or should we do B? What are the needs? And I think that from the, and again, one of the things I've appreciated as being a Commissioner is, even when we disagree, there's a professionalism amongst us that we can agree to disagree on different things, but, yes.
And I appreciate that. You're right, Commissioner Cook, we have been able to disagree agreeably. And, but in my view, respectfully, there's a big difference in this plan and the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and I'll tell you why. Number one, a lot of the Parks and Rec Master Plan was paid for by the Parks and Rec Foundation. Number two, it followed a consolidation of city and county parks where the budget more than doubled, where personnel were coming in. And number three, there was a community demand for better Parks and Rec service in a strategic plan. There's no demand for this. No constituents have come to me and said, you know what, Shawnee County would be so much better off if we just had a comprehensive plan. Doesn't happen. So that's my view. I don't think it's a valid comparison. Commissioner Cook.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion carries two to one. Commissioner Archer dissenting. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Item two, under unfinished business, consider approval of resolution number twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven, transferring fifty thousand dollars from the Planning Department General Fund to a county project fund.
I'll move a refusal on the, or move to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Beeler, second by Commissioner Cook. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion carries two to one. Commissioner Archer dissenting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, consent agenda.
Are there questions on the consent agenda?
I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item four, due business. A, county clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Madam Chair, this morning, we have one voucher report dated April first, twenty sixteen. Total amount, five hundred seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and four cents. Significant items in the total include an allocation to AMR for a hundred and fifty-two thousand, holding accounts of sixty-eight thousand, workers comp of eighty thousand dollars. Those are the main items. I've reviewed the vouchers and have no additional questions, so I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item A two, consider correction orders.
And I will move approval of the correction orders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item B, health agency, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C ninety-two dash twenty sixteen with the Kansas Association for the Medically Underserved to maintain access to up-to-date, a clinical decision support system that helps clinicians to answer clinical questions quickly and easily at the point of care at a cost of three hundred and fifty-five dollars per provider, two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars annually.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alice Weingartner, Health Agency. This is a contract that we have continued to have with KMO for at least the last two years. Through our primary care association, we're able to get a significant discount for access to this web-based decision support system. As you note in the packet, there is an email from Grace Med's CEO, Dave Sanford. Once the transition occurs, which we're still waiting, we will be able to be retroactively reimbursed to the county. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks, Alice. Other questions, Commissioner Archer?
I'll move to approve and ask, where does the HERSA stand now?
Where is HERSA? We are still waiting.
Now, it's supposed to be the first of March.
That's what we were hoping for. I am anticipating some sort of communication with regards to the relinquishment of a county grant anytime, and I'm hoping that that may provide us some insight as to what will occur after that. So as soon as I know, you will know.
Thank you. Now, I sent, now it's a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Archer.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item C, facilities maintenance, number one, consider approval of a project budget of the amount of one million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand eighty-six dollars for the renovation of the new health department building at twenty-six hundred East Circle Drive South.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Crowe, Facilities Maintenance Director.
Good morning.
The item before you is a total project budget for the health agency renovation project. We came before you with the contract with Shirley Construction. They are proceeding, and their subcontractors are over there this morning on the way in. Things were looking good as far as getting that project done on time. So as we moved forward, kind of got the cart before the horse on a couple of things, but finally got full project budget put together, all the items getting included. These are high-end estimates if they're not contractual already, so I would anticipate we'd easily meet the target of this budget. So we have discussed it with Betty, so she's aware of, we need to come up with a funding. So if you have any further questions.
Thank you. And Bill, what, and this might be for Betty as well, then where are these proceeds, or what's this budget taken out of? How's it funded?
The primary source for this will be the proceeds from the sale of the old business, of the old building. Then we will have to supplement that with other funds. Right now, I'm looking at the CLP contingency as the source of that.
How much of that?
About six hundred thousand. This is something that, you know, as you know, in other projects, like, you know, you have lingering things that then would come up later that we had not discussed ahead of time, you know, like fiber, you know, from IT department, or parking lot, those kind of things. So what we've tried to do is put together a budget so that it's, are all-in costs, so that at the end of the project, we're not having other items like lighting or things like that come up, and we kind of have an all-in budget to deal with.
On the parking lot and... On the parking lot, Kevin Hollins, he's gone forward on that, just, he gave me a very high estimate, and he felt like it was pretty high. But I really anticipate that parking lot coming in much less than that, which is still, I believe, less than we were going to have to pay five oh one one of it.
Yeah.
So all in all, I think if we can get this whole thing done for less than two million, we'll do it very well.
A follow-up question, Betty. So the sale of the building, where's how much?
Approximately three million.
And we've been paying rent?
We've been paying rent. We had some costs where we had, we were looking at different sites, so we had some costs with that, with professionals to go in and evaluate those sites. We bought the parking lot, well, the parking lot is included in here, thirty thousand. And then we've been paying rent, and we'll continue to pay rent to storm out out of those proceeds also. And then we had the building purchased from the state.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Further questions?
Ms. Archer.
Yes.
Bill, I know that at the Board of Health meeting not that long ago, we talked about our date or expectation, hope, fingers crossed, of getting moved in. Is, are we still on track for a June-ish?
We should be on track for that. Like I said, Shirley Construction's doing an outstanding job moving forward. The interior framing is complete, they started drywall. Lower Mechanical is doing a really bang-up job, getting a new HVAC system in, and microwave electric, plugging everybody, they're all doing a good job in moving forward. We have a meeting Thursday morning, so I anticipate we'll be moving on a little bit of that project. June should be reachable, so.
Well, I look forward to us not having to pay rent.
Yes.
That's the good part.
Yes. Right. Thank you.
Yeah, me too. And from what I recall, the health agency building with Solid, Solid Waste Storm Out Day, and that decision was made in August twenty-twelve, I think?
I have to look back, that sounds...
Okay. Because I don't think Commissioner Cook or I voted on the sale.
No, you did not. It was before that. I think it was in, it was in two thousand twelve. I think it was like July, something like that that was closed, but two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, as a result of that sale, then, a lot of different partners entered into the Safety Net Summit Conference and took a look at our Safety Net clinics, and as a result, that began the discussions and led to, hopefully, the eventual Grace Med coming to our community. But there has been a lot of waiting and anticipation, but hopefully then, in the end, we will have much better service to more people in our community, so. Any further questions? I need a motion to approve the project budget. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Item C two, consider approval of request to solicit bids to replace flooring, cove base, and ceiling tile in the Solid Waste Department offices lobby in first floor corridor at the North Annex at an estimated cost about to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Bill Crowe, Sales Management Director. As we know, the North Annex has been kind of the neglected stepchild of our county buildings. Anybody that's walked out into the lobby knows that right off the bat. We've got deferred capital maintenance money that I'd like to use in conjunction with some money that Tom Block and I discussed. He's got some funding from Solid Waste, and he'd like to fix up his office area and what happened, and he's willing to, the front door, he said, is his front door too, so he's willing to help fund that, which leaves us some funding to get that whole first floor done. It's nineteen eighties, eighty-five, eighty-six, something like that, vintage carpet, and it's not very... like that vintage carpet. And it's not very good throughout. Ceiling tile in the same condition. There's some old stains and heat up. And a lot of that work, we would try to do in-house as far as replacing the ceiling tile. We buy the product and kind of empower ourselves. Painting in Solid Waste area, we do that ourselves as well. So this is more to get the carpet and materials to be forward with that.
Bill, will the front desk area come out as well?
That's the plan. We want to knock that thing out of there and clean the whole thing up. And I would even consider maybe trying to find something else for the front doors there. Maybe some sliders like we have on the extension seat might be better. Probably come through with funding or request for that later. But start with cleaning it up a little bit.
That would be good. Long overdue. And I appreciate you all taking the initiative to get that finished.
Tom and I visited last week. We've got a plan.
Good. Good.
I'll move to approve the request.
Just motion by Commissioner Archer?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero. And I would hope that, I know I've talked to Tom about this, but, you know, the solid waste and recycling are over in that building. And our recycling department and household hazardous waste department are real jewels of this community. I mean, I think they contribute to our community in a great deal. But to showcase that a little bit in that entryway, I would hope that we would do something. So.
Clean it up.
Well, clean it up first. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Item five, Administrative Communications.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Block with Public Works in Solid Waste. Just reiterate, we reiterated a little bit in the last item yet, and I had Bill out. And Solid Waste, as the director of Solid Waste, I'm willing and willing to put funds in to help him get that North Annex to be something we can all be proud of as the public enters into that building. So I believe Solid Waste is in a position that we can help do that. So I'm more than happy to do that. But as far as Administrative Communications is go, this week is the week that we are making route changes on Solid Waste. And I wanted to give just a quick, one or two-minute demonstration, if I can get this pulled up correctly, show something that we have on the website that people can go to to help figure out what their collection day is and what week of recycling they're on. So if people can go to their county's website and get to the Solid Waste, the Solid Waste site, and they can get past this ugly picture here, and get to, get past that, we have here in red, pickup schedule change effective April 4th, which is today. Click on this. And I want to really offer my thanks to Riel and Stephanie Coolman, who helped get this up for us. But you can go to their, look up their, look up their service days. You go to this little search box here, and you go in and type in your address. For instance, this person here that lives at 12811, top of 350. They would do that. Click search. That person gets their trash picked up on Wednesdays, and they're on the blue week for that. And then, oops, I'm sorry. Or another example, it would be 3400, say just more east. There's a road. Click on the search. They're on Thursday, and they're on the blue week. So then, you can, once that pops up, you can click on the calendar for specific dates of recycling and holiday schedule. This brings you to the holiday schedule that we send out annually to everyone. Click on that, and our holiday schedule should pop up. It should pop up. It's still turning. I'm not sure, maybe not accepted. Our holiday schedule pops up. So that's in blue and red. So if they're in the blue week, they can get the calendar and say, okay, here's, here is, here are the weeks that my recycling is going to be picked up on all the blue lines, blue lines on the calendar. But also, just while we have it pulled up, the squares in yellow are our holidays, so we are on a holiday week schedule. And the squares in green are the Saturdays that we have, our household hazardous waste open on Saturdays. But then you go down, and then here are the holiday week schedules and the days of how they shift as far as collection. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that now that we are making the schedule change effective today, if people are interested, they can go to our website, if they can't remember what day or what week they're on for collection. They can go to the website and figure it out from there. And you're also able to, you're also able to do that from your phone. So, anyway, just wanted everybody to know.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else for Administrative Communications?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Shavon, Kansas Expo Center. Just want to report on another excellent weekend. We finished off the hockey season before the playoffs, and actually had almost a thousand folks there Saturday night. But we did host the USTRC, the Team Rodeo Championships. We had contestants from ten states, over thirty hours of competition, fifteen hundred and thirty teams, and they gave out over two hundred and ten thousand dollars in cash and prizes. We actually were full capacity in the stalls. So it was very, very good. Today, the demo derby car is being put in at Westridge Mall to promote the event at the end of the month. And today and tomorrow, we're hosting the Future Business Leaders of America in both Landin and the Exhibit Hall. So cranking it out.
Good. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Oaks from the Health Agency. This week is National Public Health Week, which is an initiative of the American Public Health Association. And the theme this year is working to become the healthiest nation in one generation by 2030. So we're living in America twenty years longer than our grandparents' generation, thanks largely to the work of public health. But you might remember Dr. Pizzino talking about it at the Board of Health, that people in other high-income countries live longer and suffer fewer health issues than we do. So we spend more, but yet we're living less years, and we're not as healthy. So this is our challenge for our generation, and the public health community is uniquely positioned to help overcome that. So I just want to share a few interesting facts by the American Public Health Association on the public health return on investment. One dollar invested in fluoridated water equals forty dollars saved in dental care. One dollar invested in child safety seats has a forty-two dollar return in avoided medical costs. For every dollar invested in food and nutrition education, there is a ten-dollar return in reduced health costs. Childhood immunizations, something near and dear to my heart, save nine point nine million dollars in direct health costs and prevent fourteen million cases of disease. Every dollar invested in biking and walking opportunities can return benefits up to twelve dollars. And here's one I really find interesting. If ten percent of adults began walking on a regular basis, five point six billion dollars in healthcare heart disease costs would be averted. Five point six billion. So I want to thank you for your support of public health and the Shawnee County Health Agency. Happy National Public Health Week. Let's take a walk to celebrate.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks. Anyone else? Commissioners? Commissioner Cook?
Well, Madam Chair, we talked earlier this morning about the Grace Med and the HERSA. I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to consider on a future agenda placing a letter to our delegates in Congress just to follow up. I know that they've been of assistance in other projects in the past. And as we get closer, I start to get anxious, as I know we all have, because this is a project that we've worked on for a considerable amount of time. I see, Alice, coming to the stage.
Yes, I am here. I, that is certainly something that we can consider, and I would like to have some discussions about that before we move forward with it because of some other activities that are also taking place. But it is certainly something that could be talked about.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just anything we can do to help support this project, anything we can do at the county level to just show our support for Grace Med and the program that they're wanting to bring into Shawnee County. This is one of vital importance to our county.
What I would recommend, once I get that notice from our project officer, and we've had an opportunity to review that, that might be a good time to just send that follow-up email or letter just saying we anxiously await your decision.
More than anxious.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might just also note that, you know, went to the Roadrunners hockey game on Saturday, invested a little bit into the community. And again, it was great to see that many people there at the Roadrunners hockey game. And then last night, I had the opportunity to go to another game. I'm glad to attend and glad to see a victory for it. And I'm sure that Commissioner Archer will be sitting at home tonight watching some other game.
Right. Exactly. Thank you. Commissioner Archer?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Cook. And if you think about it, this is a great eight or ten days of sports. We had Final Four. We got our national championship tonight. We had opening day at the Royals that you attended. And the Masters Tournament starts on Thursday. So what a, what a great number of events. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Cook for pointing out the fact that as a team, we typically agree on most issues. But when we do disagree, we do so in a professional and respectful manner. And I think that's very important for our community to realize that. So that's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item, please.
Item six, Executive Session.
And there is a need for a period not to exceed ten minutes for purposes of employer-employee negotiations. And I'm going to throw in consultation with the attorney, attorney-client relationship. It's too long of a sentence. You get what I mean.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Commissioner Beeler, second by Commissioner Archer. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries three to zero, ten minutes.